Mr. Foley.
Yeah.
Long time no see. How you doing?
Good. I don't know if I can.
No, but we have.
Well, we have the hand away for that, too.
Sorry about that.
Oh, I hate that. My battery died on my watch. I hooked at my wrist now for 200 times that I.
Is everyone all set? Or would you like another minute, Lynn? You good to go, Billy?
Uh, Billy.
All right.
It's Billy. I look around for my aunts and uncles and people say that. I sign. Just me.
I didn't. Oh, thank you, sir. No, let's. So this one smudges if you touch it too long. So that's why I'm leaving that flapped over like that. Thank you. That is what I do. Oh, okay. All right. All set, Bill?
I'm all good.
Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:01 and the Warwick Finance Committee is open. I would like to start by stating that tonight's solar ordinance was canceled. So if you're here for the solar ordinance, that has been canceled and that'll be reminded over the course of the evening. Thank you. So we got to start out with some acceptance of minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So if I may have an acceptance for the minutes on April 5th?
So moved.
I second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. If I may have an acceptance of a motion for the acceptance of the minutes on April 19th?
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If I have a motion for acceptance of the minutes on May 3rd?
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor? Aye. If I may have a motion for the minutes on May 17th?
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
If I have an acceptance of the minutes for June 7th?
Did you skip May 24? May 20. How about May 20? You don't like May 20? Then you skipped May 17th.
He's on the consent calendar.
Oh. Sorry, sir.
That's okay. All right, here we are.
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion for the acceptance of minutes for June 21st?
Move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If I may have an acceptance of the minutes for Ju- July 19th?
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So we're moving into the bid consent calendar. Item number 1, 2022-063 fire apparatus, 95-foot mile mid-mount aerial platform. Welcome, Chief McMichael. Bill's got it.
Good evening, Chairman. The Warwick Fire Department has reviewed bid 2022-063 fire apparatus, 95-foot mid-mount aerial platform, and recommends awarding the bid to Greenwood Emergency Vehicles of North Attleboro, Massachusetts. This bid is to purchase a ladder truck to replace the former ladder one that was removed from service in 2018 for various reasons, mainly deteriorated frame and other components due to rot and corrosion. Since that time, ladder one has used reserve vehicles, utility vehicles, and in 2019, a used ladder was purchased as a temporary replacement until a permanent replacement was purchased. The specifications for this truck reflect our intent to secure a quality ladder truck designed to last so that taxpayers get the most value from this purchase.
Excuse me, chief. If you wouldn't mind going closer to the microphone? Thank you, sir.
The specifications for this truck reflect our intent to secure a quality ladder truck designed to last so that taxpayers get the most value from this purchase. Functionality and performance without unnecessary bells and whistles were the driving force in determining the needs for this apparatus. Key items that have plagued our fleet in the past were taken into considerations, such as frame deterioration that were addressed in this specification. Additionally, Greenwood provides a lifetime frame structural warranty, a 10-year Cummings extended engine warranty, a 10-year 100,000-mile structural warranty for the aluminum cabin body, and a 25-year frame rail corrosion warranty will ensure the maximum bang for the taxpayer's buck. The department's two other ladder trucks in service are also E1 brand and have provided dependable and cost-effective service to the city. Our firefighters and public works mechanics are familiar with the brand and able to stock items that are regularly used for service. E1 has proven dependability and durability as is evident by our experience with the brand and by that of other area municipalities. Greenwood's close proximity to Warwick will also benefit the city by reducing travel distance when having warranty service work performed. Greenwood Fire Apparatus is the low bidder for this bid.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
So this vehicle, so we can get all the logistics out, this vehicle, this ladder truck is being purchased from the bond that this council voted on unanimously approved of the upgrades of our fleet system that was proposed by Mayor Pacozy.
Yes, Chairman.
Thank you. And this also, because this is, we are discussing of a new vehicle, the specs on the vehicle. It says pricing reflects multi-truck discount with purchase of pumper aerial and rescue. So basically, because you are doing those purchases through this bond for the department with the lease purchase program, and we're purchasing multiple vehicles, they discounted numerous prices upon the vehicle.
That's right.
Thank you. Is there any questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the council? Excuse me, I apologize. Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for bringing this, chief, as well. And I just want to also kind of piggyback on the chairman's remarks that I was very pleased earlier this year that this council, along with the administration, came together and came up with a lease purchasing program. This was over $6 million and we had met with the finance director and we all agreed that our fleets needed to be upgraded. They're old, not just the fire department, but the police, municipal, library, across our city. You know, one of the things, we always try to go as far as we can, push these things. And I believe we're going to continue to do that because we need to get as much as we can out of everything that we purchase. But there's always going to become a time where we're going to need to make these big purchases. And this is a big purchase right here, and the next couple of purchases are big purchases here. Why I'm going to be supporting this is because we voted on a lease purchasing program and this fits right in there. This is why we want to do that. We want to make sure that we know going forward, the next couple of years, what our payments are going to be for these new vehicles. This is a direct service to the residents of Warwick. Having these equipments, making sure that they are not breaking down, that they are able to do their jobs. I believe that this is done in the correct manner. I like the fact that we have this fund here that we're using it exclusively for it, not for the entire city, for these big equipment and purchases. So I am pleased that you're bringing this tonight. I think it's time. I think it's time that we make these big purchases. I like that it's going to be budgeted and it goes along with the plan that the city council and this administration has already come and supported and it's included in the budget. And it will be included in the budget going forward with these lease payments. So we know what we're paying and we're going to get these new equipment, much needed. So I just want to offer my support here this evening for this purchase and a number of other purchases coming forward that are coming out of this lease purchase agreement that I was proud to be one of the sponsors on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I go back to Councilman Lattiser. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Chairman. Chief, first I want to start off by thanking you for replying and supplying the very lengthy and detailed amount of information that I requested, actually last week while on vacation. Not only did you provide it to me, I believe the turnaround time was maybe 48 hours or less. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. That was a lot of information that I asked for and I must say, the the records here, at least what's been presented to me, it's very detailed. I don't disagree with council president or the finance chair on their comments. I know what's needed in replacing vehicles as they age and I certainly can understand the correlation between investing monies into repairs on older vehicles. I definitely can relate to the costs of not having a vehicle to do the work that you need to do with that vehicle and agree with all of that. I think what happens sometimes, putting myself in a taxpayer's position, is when you see a large number such as this, this number of $6 million, to the average person, to all of us, it's a huge number, but to the average person, it very well could be interpreted as we have to spend or pay out $6 million this year. And with a lease purchase that we're speaking about here, that's not the case. So what I am hoping that either you or Peter would have would be the number that it's actually going to cost the taxpayers per year. Because I think this lease purchase is about, is it 20 years? Is that what the speculation is?
I'd have to defer to.
If I remember correctly, it's six years.
Six years?
If I remember correctly.
Why don't we get?
The bond is six years, right, Mr. Schaefer? Yes.
So it's six years?
Six years. Yes. Yes.
So about $1 million a year, so that would break down, and Peter can correct me if I'm wrong, to about 10 cents per thousand on the tax roll. Is that accurate? Yes? No? What I'd like to do is, you know, bring this down to what the real number is so that the taxpayers will realize that it's not $6 million in one year. The number is much, much less.
First of all, the total amount is $6.5 million and the city put out the RFP for the, and will have before the council approval of the actual contract as we're going out to bid for, how many places did we send it? 20 different vendors probably. And they'll bid in interest rate. We're hoping, we're pricing this based upon hoping we're going to get 2%. You'll know percent exactly on September 20th if all goes well on the bidding process. So, you know, 2% on over $6 million is $120,000 for the first year in interest. And that, it's the term of the proposal is six years and one month. And we have a lot of equipment in here that has a very long useful life, especially the air conditioning at the library, a lot of the sanitation vehicles, the ladder truck, the engine. Some of it is shorter life, like the rescue vehicles, the police cars that we're financing and some of the rest of it.
Yeah, I understand all that, Peter. What I'm getting at is the number that we can relate to for the taxpayers' benefit. So $6.5 million, I believe the average equation is about 10 cents per million, up or down, that it cost us on the tax roll. So is it fair to say that with $6.5 million spread out over six years, it breaks down to about 10 cents per thousand on the tax roll?
A higher amount on commercial property, slightly lower amount on residential property because of tax classification in the city, and a higher amount on tangible taxes. But you need to offset lower costs to the city in other areas, especially in sanitation, where they're having to run sometimes two runs because they don't have enough trucks. And that really applies across the board in terms of cost savings. Certainly in the library, we're going to have a much more, we're going to have a green, much more energy-efficient air conditioning system, especially at the library. So you shouldn't only think of costs, you should think about savings.
Sure. No, and I agree. I'm not putting this out there as a negative. I'm putting this out there as a positive because, as I said, sometimes the people that are paying the bills, they get really nervous and concerned when they see a number of $6 million when in actuality, you're talking a couple hundred dollars a year, maybe a tad more to upgrade our equipment in this city. And we all know, and I certainly was a proponent of it and a supporter of holding back on a lot of these purchases. For two or three years in a row, we did that. And, you know, I agree, the time is here that we need to start replacing them absolutely in support of the five-year plan to do so. So we don't have to come back every year looking for $6 or $7 million because it's going to be planned and projected. The major point here is it's not a $6 million bill that has to be paid on the back of the taxpayers in one year. And there's other cost reductions, lost time, loss of use, maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, that benefits you as well. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time. Again, this wasn't a negative. It's actually in support of this issue. And I know in my world, it is a lot easier for customers to understand a smaller number than a bigger number. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I will say that, and this is totally off the comments that you made. I know that one of the big concerns, seeing that the airport is in my ward, is we need to have a ladder truck. God forbid, anything happens, we need a dependable truck that can get there. And so I'm very satisfied with this. One of the reasons why I supported the bond was to upgrade our fleet for the direct services to our citizens, but also to ensure that our safety and the safety of our citizens, our firefighters is guaranteed and the visitors to our city is guaranteed on the land, the ocean, and the air. Thank you. Are there any other questions for members of the council? Thank you. Item number two, thank you, chief. 2022-061 fire, you're right, I apologize. Any comments from the public? I do apologize. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Thank you. Item number two is 2022-061 fire apparatus, type one ambulance. Thank you, Solicitor Walsh. Chief, it's all yours.
Thank you. The Warwick Fire Department has carefully reviewed the bid 2022-061 for a type one ambulance and recommends awarding the bid to Greenwood Emergency Vehicles of North Attleboro. Greenwood Emergency Vehicles met all the specifications as outlined in the bid. The requested bid award is for two 2022 Ford F-550 four-by-four Horton 603-body type one ambulances at a total cost of $539,808. The vehicles will be delivered within 240 days from signing and the delivery of the chassis. The price includes the Stryker power load and cot, lettering to match department fleet and delivery. The funding for these rescues will be from the city's lease purchase account. Greenwood did submit a second bid listed in the packet as bid B, that is a Wheel Coach brand unit. Bid B is $13,676 less than the recommended vehicle, but the department felt that Horton Rescue is a better investment for several reasons. One is the Horton Rescue is constructed with all aluminum, whereas the interior construction and cabinets of the Wheel Coach bid vehicle is constructed with marine-grade plywood, making the Horton more likely to remain serviceable over a longer period of time should we decide to remount the module of the ambulance in the future. The AC system in the Horton unit is recessed into the roof and will not be damaged by tree branches as some AC units are that are mounted on the front of the truck or on the undercarriage of the vehicle. We have had significant issues with some vehicles that have these components mounted on the undercarriage of the vehicle where they're exposed to salt and chemicals from our roads and that wreaks havoc on the system, which results in downed air conditioning units. Additionally, the unit is capable of producing a minimum of 100,000 BTUs of cooling capacity. Of course, the AC system for these vehicles is not for the comfort of the firefighters staffing the truck, but is a requirement of the Rhode Island Department of Health that we have a properly functioning air conditioning unit for the rescue, for the patients. So we have had significant downtime on our trucks in the past for AC units. So that was one of the big reasons why we decided to go with the Horton unit. And this Horton unit is identical to the Rescue Two that we have now that was approved several months ago. Safety of the Horton vehicle was also a major concern. It has an occupant protection system in this vehicle that produces, that has two types of airbag deployment for occupant safety that lessens the impact from vehicle accidents for our citizens and firefighters. And it also has a four-point seatbelt harness that allows our crews to be secured even while they're moving about to rescue and treating the patient. They're still secured with a harness. No other vehicle offers that type of technology. These two rescues are designed and organized in the same manner as the other Horton rescue that we have, so there will be uniformity in the layout of this vehicle and crews will be able to go back and forth and work from any, on any of these rescues and know where all the equipment is and a quick time period to locate whatever equipment they need. The last time the department went out to bid for a rescue was in 2018 and those vehicles cost, that vehicle was for $291. So these vehicles are $21,000 less each than the vehicles that we specced out back in 2018, realizing more of a savings to the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And I think it's important also to say that as we see the inflation in the shortage of vehicles and so you somehow, you and your department and the administration somehow were able to go out and get bids on quality vehicles, safe vehicles, that'll again guarantee and a revenue generating vehicle in the, as far as the ambulance goes. But again, it goes back to why we approved this bond to begin with. I remember even the president getting, telling me about the time he got a phone call from a constituent as the ambulance was on its way to the hospital with the patient and it had to pull over because it broke down. So this is, this is again, one of those highly needed things that's also being used from the lease purchase. Thank you, chief. Any questions from the committee? Questions from the council? Councilman Ricks?
Thank you. I see that under this contract, it would be delivered within the 240 days. I'm not as sure if we're looking at, that's really a maximum type of situation? And if it appears that it might actually come sooner, but they have that provision in there just in case of delays? Or if we expect it to be closer to that mark, which would be about eight months out?
That is a maximum amount of time that they would anticipate it could possibly take, but it is anticipated that it would be done sooner than that and in less time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions for members of the council? Members of the public? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Thank you. Yes, Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you. Chief, that 240 days, is that calendar days or workdays?
Calendar days.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any questions for members of the public? Thank you. Item number three. Bid 2022-062 fire apparatus, 1,500 GPM pumper. Chief?
Thank you. The Warwick Fire Department has reviewed 22-062 fire apparatus, 1,500 gallon per minute pumper, and recommends awarding the bid to Greenwood Emergency Vehicles of North Attleboro. The engine will be assigned to Engine Eight on post-road. This truck was removed from service in early 2018 because of excessive frame rot. Since that time, Engine Eight was operated with loaner trucks from numerous communities who were kind enough to allow us to borrow their apparatus. The department was able to obtain used fire apparatus to use in place of having to borrow out-of-town apparatus until a new engine is purchased. Over the past two and a half years, we have purchased used apparatus as a temporary solution and obtained federal surplus fire apparatus in an effort to build up our reserve fleet. Engine Eight has been using all of these reserve trucks at one time or another. Greenwood Fire Apparatus complied with all of the specifications on the bid and submitted the lowest bid. The bid is for a 2022 E1 Typhoon 750-gallon pumper with a Hail 1,500-gallon per minute pump. The Cummings engine is covered by a 10-year extended warranty and lifetime frame structural warranty. Delivery of the vehicle will be approximately 365 days from the execution of the agreement. The Cassie Chab body and aerial ladder, I'm sorry, the Cassie Chab are all single-source manufacturer. And Greenwood Fire Apparatus facility offers complete parts and service staffed by factory-trained, emergency-certified personnel. E1 is a brand that is used extensively throughout the country and the region as our other two ladder trucks and special hazards are E1 and used extensively in neighboring departments as well. Other bids were received that either were not lower or did not meet the specifications. The specifications of this vehicle were developed with predictability and longevity of the apparatus in mind and affordability to the taxpayer as the most important factor. Our goal was to identify what is needed in a pumper that will provide emergency services to the citizens of our city for years to come in the most cost-effective manner to ensure the maximum use of the vehicle. This will be a vehicle specification that will become the standard pumper specification for the Warwick Fire Department that will provide consistency for our firefighters who operate the apparatus and for fleet technicians who maintain and repair our fleet. Fleet standardization is important so that all equipment can be located and operated in the same manner and so that parts and materials needed for fleet maintenance can be stocked and made available quickly. Cost savings was important. Some of the cost savings measures for this engine are the selection of the base model cab, removal of the onboard foam storage tank and more lower-priced emergency warning lights compared to more expensive brands. Taking these features into consideration and provided for our needs and not our wants was instrumental in keeping the price low while not sacrificing the quality of the vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Pretty much same comments as the previous. Any questions from the committee? Questions from the council? Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Chairman. Chief, do any of these vehicles or any of the vehicles in the fire department for that matter, do any of them have GPS on them?
Our tablets that we have inside of the trucks that we use do have GPS in them, so we're able to monitor where the trucks are.
so we're able to monitor where the trucks are.
I couldn't understand what you said, I'm sorry.
The tablets inside of the vehicle do have a GPS component to it so that we're able to locate where the trucks are by the tablet. So not the truck itself, the tablet that we install into it.
Okay. Does the department monitor, do they have a mileage log that you keep on any of these vehicles? As an example, in my company, truck goes from point A to customer B, and we have a log that's kept, you know, the mileage, the time, et cetera, et cetera. Does the department have that as well for every minute, basically, the truck is on the road or the vehicle?
Not as precise as that, Councilman, but we do a monthly apparatus log, and the mileage is recorded monthly in that apparatus log, and that's how we update our records for our fleet and keep an eye on the mileage for the truck so that we know when it's due for its next preventive maintenance, oil change, things of that nature.
So does that mean, just as an example, a ladder truck, let's say from Station Four, has a run to the other end of Tide Water Drive, is that mileage recorded?
For that exact run, no, it's not. It would be on a monthly basis that we would tally the mileage. We certainly review it each month, and if there was, if anything stood out that was out of character or excessive, we would look into it and question it. But as far as each particular run, we don't record the exact mileage for each particular run the truck goes on.
And that tracking device, for lack of a better description, that you mentioned earlier, so does that mean at any given time of the day or night that the Fire Department knows exactly where a vehicle is at any specific time?
Yes, a dispatcher will be able to bring it up on the screen and identify exactly where that truck is.
Whether it be a ladder, a pumper, a rescue, or anything like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions for members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Questions or comments from members of the public? Hearing none. Item number four, 2022-033 Aerial Boom Tree Trimming Vehicle. That is found on page 16. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kristi Moretti, Public Works, Department of Public Works.
Can you hold, my hearing is, there you go.
The Department of Public Works is requesting to purchase an aerial boom tree trimming vehicle for the Highway Department. It will essentially replace the 2003 vehicle that we use currently. It's not suitable for day-to-day service. They do still use it, but they are due for a new truck in the amount, and we are looking for, to piggyback the state bid, number 559, and requesting to purchase from Allegiance Trucks in the amount of $165,725.
Thank you, Kristi. And this is again, a direct service vehicle to the citizens. It goes out and it, like, especially now with the new LED lights, we're going to probably need, correct?
I'm sorry?
This is a direct service vehicle?
Yes.
Thank you. And this is, I'm sorry, and the other follow-up I had is that this is used, I know that one of the things, now that we have actual streetlights that are working, we've had to trim down a lot of trees to kind of let the lights get through the branches and hit it, and so that with this new vehicle, we can start resuming and, or even pick up that someone.
We have a lot of tree issues.
Yeah, we certainly do. Thank you. Questions from the committee? I see Councilman Foley.
I put a, I'm sorry, I put a request in for trimming. Hold on. Hello?
Yes, Mr.?
Thank you. I had put a request in for trimming in Ward One, and I was told that the truck was down. Do we still only have the one truck that is still currently out of service? Or is that one back in service and this will either supplement or replace?
So I'm assuming the truck is back in service because I did see it go by my office earlier today. But this will, the new vehicle will be the primary vehicle that the tree crew uses, and then we'll put this one in reserve if the event of, for whatever reason, the primary truck is out of service. We do have something else we can use, however, it's old, it has had a lot of work done to it. We do have to have to get the boom certified every year for safety, and, you know, we've had it, we've had it previous years where it hasn't passed, and we've had to put in some major repairs, so we'll keep it as long as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Travis.
Kristi, how long would it take to get this vehicle?
This vehicle, because it's part of the state bid, it's, it stays, delivery is to be mutually agreed upon. So that's something that will work out with the vendor, but the impression that I got in speaking with them was that it would not be a long, probably like four months or so before it shows up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the council, Council President McAllister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Kristi, thank you for bringing this forward to us. I think this is much, much needed. We have all been getting these calls. It's been, especially July, the rain was just crazy, which means you can't get out there and cut as much as you'd like, plus it's growing even more. We've heard about the truck being down as well. I think this is one of the, again, the direct benefit that Chairman Howe keeps talking about, that people call in, they ask for this, and then when it comes out, they see the difference, and it makes, and it's a safety issue, and it makes it look a lot better, too. So I am pleased that we're putting this forward. I know you will be getting plenty of requests from Ward Seven, so we will, you know, hopefully those will be before Councilman Foley's, just kidding, Councilman, but we will put it to good work. So I thank you for bringing this forward, and I think this is an important investment for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other questions or comments from the council? Questions, questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, thank you. Before I move on to the next item, I just want to, I saw some new people walk in, just making a general announcement that the, the planning ordinance for solar was canceled this evening. So the hearing for solar was canceled this evening, so there will not be a hair on the solar this evening. Thank you. Item number five, thank you, Kristi. Item number five, 2021-283 Alpha Bravo Fire Apparatus Repairs. And Kristi?
Public Works is requesting to increase the award amount on this bid from $50,000 to $125,000, which is a $75,000 increase. This bid does not expire until June 7, 2022. It is for all vendors as listed in the bid package, and as the chief spoke to the condition of the vehicles, you know, it does affect our department as well, so we are, we have to request more spending authority.
Thank you, Kristi. And I know that if I can ask the general question, I see that it expired in June, wait a minute, is this the one, yeah, expired in, no, the current, you just want to raise the cap. I apologize. Thank you. And yes, we do need a lot of repairs. I got it confused with the other bid. Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Questions from the council? Questions from the public? Question, comments from the public? Thank you. Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you.
Item number six, 2022-097 Firefighter Occupational Medical Evaluations. Chief?
Good evening. Assistant Chief Umpen Howard from the Fire Department. A bid for firefighter occupational medical evaluations has been carefully reviewed by the Fire Department. One vendor submitted a bid. Therefore, we recommend the bid be awarded to AtMed Treatment Center. This is for Fire Department required annual medical evaluations of all firefighters. The current bid expires on 8/23. This is a one-year bid for an amount not to exceed $71,000.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the committee? Councilwoman Travis?
In the past, we had multiple bids on this, right?
I believe last year, we had two bids, one from AtMed, one from Concentra Medical down in, down in Warwick Mall. For some reason, they did not bid. They didn't get the bid last year. I'm not sure if they just assumed that they were going to have the same price, they seem to have the same prices every year, that they wouldn't get it again.
This year, we only have one, so just curious how we only have one bid.
Yeah, we just received the one this year.
And this is part of the contract, right?
This is state law. So state law requires us to follow NFP 1500, which in turn requires us to follow 1582, which is a medical evaluation annually of all members. It's a state law.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions from members of the council? Council, Councilman Lattesor?
Thank you, Chairman. Chief, this is an item that I have always questioned, been questioning since I got onto council in 2013, and the reason for those questions is not because of the need or not need for these evaluations, the questions have always been for the same reason. And there were multiple years when $70,000 was plugged into this line item, maybe $75,000, and there were several years when nothing was used. One year, $10 was used. And after year after year of questioning this line item, keep in mind when the money wasn't used for its intended purpose, it got transferred to something else or somewheres else. It seems to have been used more over the last several years for its intended purpose. So could you tell us what has been spent out of this line item for the five previous years, including this year?
I can't tell you the previous five years. I know not a lot has been spent in the years previous to fiscal year '21 because there was no bid in place. And we had, I believe before I became Assistant Chief, there was some trouble with actually awarding the bid. There was a lot of questions as to whether or not health insurance covered it, whether or not we were required to do it. I believe we settled all that last year with Blue Cross saying that it is not a covered expense and that we did, you know, by state law, were required to do it. So my first experience with this would be a year ago. And then a year ago, we awarded it to AtMed, and so far this year, we've done those exams. We've spent $51,000 since we awarded the bid a year ago, and then we've got another $9,500 bill pending right now that should be paid out of the same bid. Not the new bid, but the old bid, the existing bid.
I understand, you know, the COVID thing, and I understand that you haven't had an academy in the past year. But I do have some numbers over the last five years, and it appears as though, for the most part, the money has been used for its intended purpose. If I recall, they're in the 60s, in the $60,000 range over the last probably four or five years. So it's more palatable for me to be able to support this, knowing that the money's used for its intended purpose as opposed to being shifted off elsewhere, and we'll go from there, but thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions from members of the council? Members of the public? Questions or comments from members of the public? Thank you. Item number seven, found on page 60, Municipal Fire Training Programs. Chief?
Fire Department is seeking a 566 exception to bid to send 21 fire recruits to the State of Rhode Island Municipal Fire Training Program, seeking to award the purchase to the Rhode Island State Fire Training Academy in Exeter for the amount of $68,460. The class is offered at a cost of $33,260 per student. The cost of this course is, by the way, the Fire Training Academy in Rhode Island is the only authorized pro-professional qualifications board. That's why we're requesting the 566, because they're the only vendor in Rhode Island that's authorized by the qualifications board. It's going to be funded through our budget code 35301, train and education, when it was budgeted this last fiscal year.
Thank you, Chief. That's encouraging 21 recruits.
Twenty-three. We're only sending 21 through the academy, two just graduated.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from Councilman Foley?
How many of the 21, how many do anticipate making it through the academy?
Twenty-one.
Good. That's A. B is how many of them will be hired by the City of Warwick?
Twenty, wow, twenty-one. Actually, twenty-three, because two of them aren't going to the Municipal Academy because they just went, we're not going to send them back.
Thank you. Having conversations with the chief and yourself before, you're anticipating another academy right after the first of the year? Is that correct?
Yeah, in order to get the 204 number that we were budgeted for, we, we can only, the fire academy can only accommodate 21 of us at a time. So although we would like to put more than 20, 21 on, they could only accommodate that many. We were lucky enough to be able to get to 23 because two had already taken the Municipal Academy, so we're just going to complete their training here in Warwick. But by the time they finish in January, February rolls around, we're still probably going to be a half a dozen, dozen short of that 204. So we're anticipating wanting to send another group through in the spring.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the committee? Members of the council? Questions from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Members of the public? Seeing none, thank you. We're going to move on to item number eight, which is found on page 64. Bid 2022 Consultant Services Limited Hazardous Building Material Investigation and Associated Demolition or Remediation Estimates. Luke, hello. Good evening.
How are we doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. Good evening. I'm here to present on a limited hazardous building materials investigation and associated demolition and remediation estimates for awards to GZA Environmental in the amount of $50,000. Many of you remember, we had a similar assessment done for the road school property prior to disposition of that property. We are gearing up to dispose of the school properties. We're trying to fast-track that. This is a critical part of the process in conjunction with the appraisals we will be doing on the properties. So the intent is to have limited hazardous building material assessments done that'll tell us what's needed as far as remediation if these buildings were to come down or they were to be repurposed. So that information will be included in RFP that would be going out, so the potential bidders would know what they're bidding on and be clear on the guidelines that are set of the purchase of the property. So we did put this out the bid. We sent it out to 10 qualified consultants directly. In addition, it was posted in accordance with our standard procedures on the website, et cetera. We received three bids. Prices ranged from $16,405 to $9,125, which was GZA Environmental. We've worked with GZA in the past. We feel confident they can proceed. I have spoken with the project manager, and they are clear on the requirements. It is a per-site cost. We have an upper threshold of the $50,000. There may be more or less tests needed, depending on the size of the building, depending on the extent of work and the amount of sites, but we know that right now, we have four sites on board to assess. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Luke. Questions from the committee? Questions from the council? Councilman Rix?
I apologize for not asking this question before the meeting. Something that I was just noticing is that Aldridge is on the list. Perhaps my recollection isn't what it used to be, but I thought that Aldridge had previously been assessed since it was put out for an RFP a couple of years ago.
So it was not assessed. It was put out the RFP, and we have the previous school data, which is the AHRA reports and some of the general data on the facility. My concern on that is when you go into a deal and then it gets further assessed by the potential buyer, and that's unclear, they're welcome to come back to the table at that point and try to renegotiate because, for instance, roads, we didn't know there was a substantial amount of asbestos tiles on the roof, and that came to light during this assessment because I- because I plugged the roof, and we had 100 samples, and it came back that a majority or a good portion of that roof was asbestos. So that affects the overall deal, right? So now, depending on how that facility needs to be renovated, they come back to the table, and it's almost like a change order. A vendor comes to you, and they say, well, I want to renegotiate. They're a locked-in bidder. So it becomes less of a leveraged position for the city to engage. So I'd rather have all this information upfront. I think it's a worthy investment. We'll recoup it on the back end. I think it's prudent due diligence to move forward with this.
All makes sense to me. Thank you for your diligence on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions from members of the council? Members of the public? Any questions, comments from members of the public? Hearing none? That was the final item of $50,000 or more. I will ask the committee members if they have any bid items that they would like to discuss. Councilwoman Travis?
Yes, on page 131, 2022-127, emergency overhead door repair.
Yep. Thank you. Are there any other items that members of the committee would like to discuss? Council President, are there any items that the council president or the council would like to discuss? Councilman Sinapi?
I have to pull to 2022-110A and B.
Do you have the bid, the actual, not the bid number, but the number on the item, 25 and 26? Thank you. So, Councilman, you have a request with PCRs, correct?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm just updating my notes. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lattesor?
Thank you, Chairman. Item 2022-111, found on page 93.
Bid 2022-111?
Yes, on page 93.
Yes, sir.
2022-123, on page 95.
Yes. Thank you.
2022-96, on 119.
2022-096. Yes, Councilman?
Item 2022-095, on 135.
2022-095. Yes, Councilman?
That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other items, bid items, members of the council would like to discuss? Are there any items on the bid calendar that members of the public would like to discuss? Are there any items on the bid calendar that members of the public would like to discuss? Thank you. I will first go, I'll go in numerical order. So I will ask for item number 15, which is found on page 93, bid 2022-111, reaccreditation services. Councilman Lattesor?
Thank you, Chairman. This is more of a comment on this item. I will have one question for the major at the end. The accreditation processes that the police department has been going through for so many years has, I think, been remarkable, to say the least. It has saved the City of Warwick tens of thousands of dollars, has certainly benefited the life safety of our residents, as well as the police officers. And I think it's particularly important to speak to that, given what's going on nationally in our country. I think it's particularly important to continue to encourage the police department and all of our offices to continue to strive for that accreditation and reach that level of excellence year after year. What I would ask, Major, having said that, if you could just explain what the code number is, 364-0400, this is the area that the monies are coming out of, could you just put that out there for folks that may not be familiar with that?
Yes, Councilman. That code is actually the federal asset forfeiture money that we received.
That's the tongue-twister code, right? The asset forfeiture code, the tongue-twister code. Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure we got that out on the record. And thank you, Major. Welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. That's a great point you made. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? Any questions or comments from other council members on bid 2022-111?
I have one.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Councilman Lattesor for mentioning this. I agree with absolutely everything he said. I think one of the reasons that Warwick has such a great police department and a great reputation, part of it is these accreditations, the extra steps that they take, that is now ingrained in the department. And I just want to thank the councilmen for pulling this out to highlight this, especially during these times. And thank you, Major, for bringing this forward.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. President. Any other members of the council? Members of the public? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Hearing none? Thank you. We'll move on to now item number 16, which is bid number 2022-123 Criminal Investigation 1 and 2, which is found on page 95 in the packet. Councilman Lattesor?
Thank you, Chairman. Again, just a comment on this, because in the past, at least the members of the council that were here, we had some pretty heavy interaction, let's say, about some of the costs on the, some of this training. And it oftentimes weighed in on the cost of lodging. And working together with some of our counterparts in other states, we were able to get some significant savings on the lodging when our police officers had to go out for training. I just thought that it was important to note here that in this 3,900, there is no traveling cost incurred to the taxpayers. There is no lodging cost incurred by the taxpayers. And again, it's not a million-dollar item, but every dollar is important to the people that are paying the bills. And I just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Again, great points. Comments from members of the committee? Further comments from members of the council? Comments, questions from members of the public? Comments, questions from members of the public? Thank you, Councilman. Next will be item number 18, bid 2022-096, found on page 119. That is radio communications, equipment repair and replacement. Discussion per request. Councilman Lattesor, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Chief, this item is, it was close to the $50,000 mark, but I was reading through it, and I noticed that we only had one person or one company bid out of the ones that were invited. And I wanted to ask you if anyone had reached out to the other vendors to inquire after the bid was opened, why they had not bid?
No, I did not. This is an exercise in futility, for the most part, this competitive bid. Cybercom is the, as of this year, is the only radio vendor that's authorized to work on our radio system. We piggyback on the statewide system, which is run by Rhode Island Emergency Management. You have to be a certified administrator on their system in order to do service on the system. Cybercom is the only one. But just to keep them honest, we make them go out to bid every year, just in case there is somebody else that is, that becomes certified as an administrator, and we aren't aware of it. So we put it out every year, just in case that occurs.
So has anyone from the department reached out to any other potential vendors and asked them if they wanted to go through the exercise of being certified and authorized to work on these communication devices? And I ask that because oftentimes, with vehicles, whether it be trucks, fire trucks, or automobiles, or boats, there is, you know, everybody has their favorite person, their favorite go-to person to do the repairs. And sometimes with a newer vehicle, your favorite person may not be certified. But they can, in fact, be trained by, you know, Mercury, or Volvo, or whatever else, to become a certified technician for that. Has the department ever looked into that?
We have not, and I don't think we're in our right to do it. I believe Rhode Island Emergency Management would be the person that would have to reach out to vendors to do that. It's their system. We just reap the benefits of it.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the council? Questions from, comments from members of the public? Seeing none? Thank you. Item number 20, found on page 131, bid number 2022-127, emergency overhead door repairs. I yield Florida. Councilwoman Travis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question basically is, emergency overhead door, need to have to get done right away, right? And this was for Rescue Four. We get an invoice 17 months later. It says March 2, 2020. I don't understand how that can happen. Who's not watching it? How can you have an emergency done? You know it's getting fixed. You get the text, and it don't get paid?
Yeah, if you look at the date, that is the beginning of the pandemic. So what happened is this, under the previous administration, this, we had no bid in place at the time for overhead door repair. We had a complete failure of the door of Rescue Four. The previous administration had approved this as an emergency purchase. But then the pandemic hit a week after that. I believe it was March 17th, we declared that emergency. It got lost in the shuffle, not only by the city, or not by the city, by the fire department and by overhead door, because they lost their workers. We're actually still seeing some invoices that were not properly invoiced or not properly distributed to the department for a payment in a timely fashion. We are under the understanding that this was paid through the emergency declaration. But then when we actually went back, did the research, talked overhead door, we had looked, the repair was indeed done. The invoice had not been paid. So just to make them whole and to pay the invoice that we agreed to pay, we have to come before the council, you guys, the council, to get approval for that, because it's such a pass-to invoice.
Thank you for that.
Blame that one on COVID, too.
All set, Councilwoman? Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the committee? Questions, comments from the council? Questions, comments from the public? Any questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you, Chief. Item number 21, which is found on page 135, bid 2022-095, radio circuits. This was requested by Councilman Lattesor. Councilman Lattesor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually kind of making myself a little nervous here with all these kudos. It's probably a result of that extended vacation time. But nevertheless, I just wanted to read this into the record as well. As you all know, I'm certainly the first one to jump on issues that don't make sense and that I don't support. But I think it's important to give those kudos when you can. This is from Phil Calucci, MIS Director. With respect to this item, he says, as presented previously by using Oshene rather than Verizon, the Warwick Fire Department has been enjoying savings of well over $1,500 per month since we made this change on this item. And this contract covers one of the department's radio circuits, et cetera, et cetera. But again, this, this like just speaks volumes to responsible management of, you know, digging into the trenches and coming up with with these savings that they're repetitive. It's not like you save, you know, a nickel today, and then tomorrow it's gone. These have been continuing, ongoing savings. And when we start lumping all these things up together, that helps us to buy a lot of those service items that we need for the taxpayers. So I just wanted to put that out there once again, and just remind everyone of that savings per month due to, you know, the hard work of numerous people involved. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman, for saying that. That's $18,000 a year. You're absolutely right that this, that this is saving the city.
I promise you, I won't go on another vacation soon. Making myself very nervous here.
I gotta be honest, I was thinking that. But I was gonna wait until after the Finance Committee to say it. Members of the committee, anything? Members of the council? Members of the public? Members of the public. Thank you, Councilman. The next item we will be discussing is item number 25, found on page 148, 2022-110 Alpha. And I believe, well, I think we can discuss also 20, but we'll go one at a time. I'm sorry. Pest Control Services. Councilman Sinapi?
I just need a PCR, nothing more.
PC. Per request, the Councilman Sinapi, bid number 2022-110 Alpha, Pest Control Services will now have a PCR and pulled from the bid package of PCR 105-21. 105-21?
105-21.
Yep, yeah, I was just.
105, I think it is. I think it's 105.
No, solicitor, do I have comments, questions on that? Okay, thank you. Are there any? So we wait. Sorry. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? Questions, comments from the council? Questions, comments from the public? Questions, comments from the public? Thank you. Oh, that's true. We do actually need a motion. May I have a motion to, on PCR 105-21?
Motion for favorable action? You can't vote.
Oh, she can now? No, you can. All right. So Councilwoman Travis made the motion.
I second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Item number 26, found on page 153, bid 2022-110 Bravo, Pest Control Services. Request is another, to be pulled as a PCR, correct, Councilman?
Yes, please.
Thank you. This will be PCR 106-21. May I have a, oh, any comments or questions from the committee? Comments or questions from the council? Comments or questions from the public? Comments or questions from the public? Thank you. May I have a motion for favorable action?
Second?
We have a motion? We have a second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you so much. So seeing no further discussion on the Finance Committee bid package, may I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Favorable action?
I have a motion for favorable action? Seconded? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you all very much. Before we move on to the minutes in the next portion of the Finance Committee, I do want to identify and let citizens in the audience know that the solar hearing for this evening, originally scheduled for this evening, is now, has been canceled, that the solar public comment, or the public meeting has been canceled. Thank you, Mr. President. Now we will hold for the minutes. May I have a motion for the March 31st minutes?
Motion proved.
Motion made, seconded by myself. All in favor? Aye. May I have a motion for the, may I have a motion for favorable action for April 5th meeting?
So moved.
Seconded? All in favor? Aye. A motion for the April 19th, motion for acceptance of minutes for April 19th?
So moved.
Seconded? All in favor? Aye. A motion for acceptance of the minutes of May 3rd?
So moved. Favorable action?
Seconded? All in favor? Aye. A motion favorable? A motion favorable action in the minutes for May 17th?
Favorable action?
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. A motion favorable action on the minutes for May 24th?
Favorable action?
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. A motion for favorable action on the minutes of June 7th?
Favorable action?
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. A motion favorable action on the meeting from June 21st?
Favorable action?
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. A motion for favorable action on the meaning, for the meeting, July 7th, July 19th? Correction, let me scratch that, say it again. A motion for favorable action for the meeting on July 19th?
So moved.
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
PCR 10221, resolution relative to abatements. Hello, Neil.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Finance Committee, members of the council. Neil Dupuy, Director of Assessing. This month, we have abatements in the amount of $96,082.8. With the exception of about $268, they're all tax exemptions that have been applied to residents' tax bills. But I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Neil, is it fair to say that a lot of this is just also catch-up from the last year and committee results?
I think mainly because of COVID. A lot of people weren't ready to come out at the time. But when they got their tax bills, it was the reminder that they hadn't come in for their exemptions. So this is a catch-up from that. And plus, we really haven't had any abatements the last few months. So it's a little bit of that as well.
Understood. Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Questions from the council? Councilman Ladisore.
Thank you, Chairman. Neil, I just want to point out that I've received, let's just say, numerous phone calls from taxpayers, not just in my ward, throughout the city. And you guys also have a difficult job to do over there because sometimes the conversations are not always pleasant, and they may not always start out pleasant. But I do need to say, everyone that has contacted me has been very complimentary about the way they were treated by yourself, as well as staff in your department. So it is, it is difficult, particularly when people feel as though something is wrong and they go in there and they're pretty fired up. But I think it's always good when they walk out and they may not be 100% satisfied, but at least they felt that they were treated with respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. It's good to hear. That's what we're there for. We serve the residents and we try to at least educate them. Like you said, they might not agree at the end of the day, but we try to educate them on the process and if we can help them out, we do so.
Thank you, Councilman. And thank you for those comments. Absolutely. Thank you.
Don't get used to it.
Questions from council? Questions from public? Questions, comments from the public? Hearing none? May I have a motion on PCR 102-21?
Favorable action?
Second.
I have a motion favorable, I have a second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. The time is now 6:13. The Finance Committee is closed. Thank you, everyone.
And I just want to make a quick announcement as we move on to the next committee. As Chairman Howe has mentioned, the public hearing on the solar ordinance has been canceled tonight. However, we still do have a public comment section where we start right at 7 o'clock. So if any residents are interested, please go to the podium and sign up and you're able to speak on any issue facing the city of Warwick tonight. So, thank you.
Tim? That's Sinapi. What's the next committee? All right, so I don't need to be here. I can go back to my chair for a minute. No? When? I've got noon coming, too. Oh, that's your first? Congrats. I got my sixth coming in December. Yeah. Is that?
Bye.
So I will call you.
So ordinance will start at 6:18 PM. First, we have acceptance of minutes from the April 5th, 2021 meeting. I should ask, can we do this as a batch or do we have to do individually? All right. So acceptance of minutes of the April 5th, 2021 meeting, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Next, we have minutes from the April 19th, 2021 meeting.
So moved to accept.
Second.
Motion made and accepted, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Next, May 3rd, 2021 minutes.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion made and accepted, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Next, we have the May 17th, 2021 minutes.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion made and accepted, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Next, we have the June 7th, 2021 minutes.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Next, we have June 21st, 2021 minutes.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Next, we have the PCO 6-20 for the solar ordinance. At the request of the administration, we're going to recommend for a public hearing on September 20th as opposed to this evening. Do we have a motion?
If I may, I've heard a couple of different things. So to clarify, we are seeking to hold this to September 20th as opposed to taking any sort of different action on it.
That's my understanding, yes. And the public hearing will occur on that date instead of today.
Move to hold to September 20th.
Second.
All right, so the motion is recommend for a public hearing on September 20th. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Next, we have PCR 39-21, a resolution extending a commission to examine possible means of tax relief for Warwick property owners through tax exemptions and altering composition of the membership of the same commission. Councilman Ricks.
Move to hold to September 20th.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Oh, and just for clarification, the solar ordinance from the prior motion was PCO 6-20 Sub B, an ordinance relative to amendment of the Warwick zoning ordinances, regulations for the installation of solar energy systems, and amending administrative procedures for overlay districts in Section 305 of Appendix A zoning ordinances. And again, the motion was for recommend for public hearing on September 20ish, 20th, was made, seconded, and passed. And now we had a motion made, seconded, and passed for PCR 39-21 for the tax commission. Next, we have PCO 2121, an ordinance in regards to the placement of no parking either side signs. Yeah, that's all I'm going to read of that. So on Beechwood Drive. That's for Councilman Gebhardt, who's not here. Do we have a motion to hold that to the next meeting?
Move to hold to the meeting on August 30th.
Second.
Chairman Sinapi, I'm sorry. Just to confirm, I did receive an email from Councilman Gebhardt that since he would not be here in his absence, he would be requesting a hold of one meeting for both of his items.
Perfect. All right, so a motion made and seconded to hold to August 30th, which apparently is exactly what Councilman Gebhardt wants. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Next is the other one for Councilman Gebhardt, PCR 202221, ordinance in regards to erecting a no parking sign, loading and unloading only on Robert Ave, north of Charlotte Drive.
That's the same thing he wants to hold to August 30th.
Move to hold to August 30th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Unless I'm mistaken, I believe that is all for ordinance as of 6:22 PM.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And again, just for acknowledge everyone here that the solar ordinance is not going to be heard this evening. However, we do have a public comment part on the agenda, and we will put that first when we start the regular council meeting at 7:00 PM. If you're interested in speaking before us this evening, there is a sign-up sheet on the podium in front of us. Thank you.
Public Safety Committee meeting is called to order at 6:23. The first, first item is the acceptance of minutes from committees' meetings. Motion for favorable action on the April 5th minutes?
Move to accept.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion to favorable action on the April 19th minutes?
Second.
Motion. Need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion for favorable action on the May 3rd minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion for favorable action on the May 17th?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion for favorable action on the June 7th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion for favorable action on the June 21st minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And motion for favorable action on the July 19th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All favor? PCR 103-21, resolution relative to claims. Am I right to go through the minutes again? Okay, thank you. So now for the acceptance of minutes from the committee meeting held on April 5th, a motion for favorable action?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion for favorable action on the May 3rd minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion for favorable action on the June 7th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And motion for favorable action on the July 19th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
PCR 103-21, consent calendar claims for August 16th. The first one is for Kevin Klaemer. We have a recommendation of favorable action. Do we have a motion?
If I may discuss?
Go ahead. Motion, and then discuss? All right, discuss. I'm sorry.
Let's see, the only item that concerns me here is that on the affidavit, the claimant indicates that he is intending to seek compensation from Allstate. I would venture to guess that Allstate is his insurance company as this incident occurred while he was, his car had been parked on city property. So in terms of the merits, certainly seems fair to me that he would receive the $1,401.76 as the department recommends, which is also the lowest of the three bids. However, because he is seeking compensation from Allstate, I would want to seek clarification on whether he hasn't received any of that compensation because we don't want to send out a check and effectively give double compensation. And we also don't want to cut a check and then have Allstate coming back at us and effectively making us pay double compensation. So for that reason, I would, unless we have clarification on that point, I think that it would be a good idea to hold the matter for one meeting.
Is the claimant in the audience tonight? My only question, Councilman, is who would, who do you suggest should reach out to the claimant?
Let's see. I'm not certain exactly which ward this address is in. It's in 02886. Well, it could be six, it could be seven or eight, I think.
I'll reach out to them.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to hold PCR? Say that again, please. 107? So we're holding that till the next meeting, which is the?
30th.
30th. Motion to hold? Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
The second claim is for Joshua Rotundo, and the motion, I'm sorry, the recommendation is to reject. Do we have a motion to reject?
See if I may discuss. This one is a bit confusing to me because I do understand the logic in the memo and for the public, this is very brief. It says, "Upon investigation of this claim, the department has not located a quote-unquote spike in the roadway on..." spike in the roadway on Jefferson Boulevard in the area in question. There is a sign breakaway sticking up on an island outside of the parking garage, which is not city property." And so, then we have a picture of it, and it could certainly be consistent with a description of a spike, but there's a couple of things going on here where, first, Jefferson Boulevard is a city road. Generally, I would anticipate that the median of the city road would also be city property. However, it seems that if that is the very same spike that is being described here, then I would say that it's not the city's fault that this person drove up over the curb and hit that. So, I am comfortable with moving to reject, but I did want to make sure to explain that because it takes a little path to get there. Forgive the pun.
So, we have a motion to reject the claim. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, thank you. Any other comments from members of the committee? Any comments from members of the council? Any comments from members of the public? Seeing none, we have a motion for favor, to reject this claim. Seconded again?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The third claim is for Erica Wilding, and the, I'm sorry, the recommendation is for favorable action, the amount of $394.99. Any comments from members of the committee?
Here we go.
All seems in order to me.
Any comments from members of the council? Any comments from members of the public? Have a motion for favorable action?
Move favorable action in the amount of $394.99.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, the Public Safety Committee is closed at 6:32.
What's next? We work well as a team. All right, I'm on, oh. Lynn, what's the next committee? Am I on that? I forgot. Oh, good, thank God. Well, I'm on pretty much everything else. You're lucky my mic's on. I am on it.
Wait, no, we do have public properties. I just didn't break that one with me. Send you a beach.
Let me get my paperwork.
It is now 6:33, and Intergovernmental Committee is now in session. The first order of business is the acceptance of the minutes from April 5th, 2021. Do I hear a favorable motion?
So moved.
Second?
I have a favorable motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Second is the acceptance of the meetings from April 19th, 2021. Do I hear a favorable motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of the minutes from May 3rd, 2021. Do I hear a favorable motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Acceptance of the minutes from May 17th, 2021. Do I hear a favorable motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a favorable motion for the minutes on June 7th, 2021?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a favorable motion for the minutes on June 21st, 2021?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a favorable motion for the minutes of July 19th, 2021?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The next order of business is PCR 81-21, a resolution in observance of cancer awareness, not drafted. Councilman Sinapi?
Move to hold till August 30th?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
That ends the Intergovernmental Committee at 6:35.
We can't stop, we're ahead.
Thank you. I had a good teacher.
Just a quick update, the next committee will be the Public Properties, but it cannot start until 6:40. So, it will start at 6:40. And again, a reminder, the zoning ordinance public hearing has been canceled. However, if you're interested in speaking to the council, we do have public comments, and we will have that at the start of the council meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Public Properties, Land Use Committee, and Community Affairs will start at 6:40.
The time is now 6:40 PM. The City Council Committee on Public Properties, Land Use, and Community Affairs comes to order. First, we have the acceptance of the minutes. Do we have a motion for the acceptance of the minutes of April 5th, 2021? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion for favorable action for the minutes of April 19th, 2021? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Favorable motion for the minutes of May 3, 2021? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Favorable action for the minutes of May 17th, 2021?
Favorable action? So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Going too fast here. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
There we are. Okay. Do we have a motion for favorable action on the minutes of June 7th, 2021? Second? Let's see. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion for favorable action on the minutes of June 21st, 2021? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for favorable action, minutes of July 19th, 2021? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on, we have, this is Councilman Sinapi for First Passage, PCO 30-19, ordinance involving state law regarding unutilized commercial property. All right. Okay. All right, and actually, before we do that, if I may, request to be added as a cosponsor?
Of course.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion to hold to September 20th. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, last up, we have Councilman Lattiser. This is, let's see, it appears that this is, I don't see on the agenda, it's saying First Passage or? Oh, thank you. All right, very good. We have PCR 100-21, a resolution accepting donations of land for public highway purposes. Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, with us this evening is Eric Earls from Department of Public Works, also Joe Noel, the owner of Habalights. So, just to give you a history on this, over the last nine years since I've been on the city council, it's been a huge issue with the residents in that particular area, which take up Clifton and Gray, Payne, Meadowview, with an excessive amount of traffic in a residential area. In that area, we also have three daycare centers in that area as well, and we've had numerous meetings with the neighbors. When I say "we," Joe Noel, myself, and the neighbors regarding that traffic problem. We also have Habalights, who is a significant player in the city of Warwick in that area. And while it's right in my mind at this point, in the interest of full disclosure, I do want to put on the record that I have known Joe Noel, as well as his father, Governor Phil Noel, for many, many years. For many years, I did store my boat at Habalights, and that's the extent of our relationship. I have not had my boat there. This is going on the third season now. And having said all that, in the interest of full disclosure, there is absolutely no doubt in my mind that I will make a fair and clear decision in this particular matter. And also, I represent a significant amount of people in that area that are looking for me to represent them as well. So, here we are with a situation where Joe Noel has approached the city of donating this portion of land, which is referred to as Meadowview Avenue, which most people had no idea the city did not own. For some 60 years, the city has been maintaining the road, and the Noels for the last 35 or more years have been allowing the community, the city as a whole, the DPW, police, fire, rescue, sanitation, to use the roads, as well as the occupants in that area. There is better than 100 homes that are impacted in that area, probably translates into 300 or more people. In here, and I'll just review it quickly, and I will ask Eric to speak on it further, is favorable recommendation from the planning department, also from Eric Earls. I have met with the mayor on this, the mayor supports this as well. And in here, we have a site and environmental review, which has been put in the package from Dan Gigan. Speaking to over 150 years of site history, there's no evidence that the site was ever occupied by a use that would require further environmental investigation. Potential closure of the historic private right of road would disturb the existing circulation pattern and adversely impact the surrounding neighbors. Acquisition of the parcels is determined to be in the best long-term interest of the public to ensure that the property continues to be utilized uninterrupted by the general public as a permanent public right of way. It is recommended that the proposed dedication is worthy of consideration by the city council. Dan also includes in here an environmental assessment, land use history and background, the fact that from a land use perspective, this history is significant as it denotes that the use of the property for transit transitioned from horse-drawn carriage to electric trolley, and finally, to automobile. Diesel or wood coal-fired trains were never used on this system, and therefore, any contaminants associated with the heavier, more noxious railroad uses would likely not be associated in this parcels. He also includes a fire insurance map, which also speaks favorably to the issue. And he also goes on to provide us with an alternative analysis. And the alternative analysis would be to completely redirect the road from where it currently exists and is currently owned by the Noels. And he goes on to say, "In considering the proposed dedication, it is important to at least contemplate the possible alternatives available to the city. The lots proposed to be dedicated and accepted by the city of Warwick for highway purposes would allow the continuance of the existing path of travel for both area residents and guests visiting the marina and its golf courts. In addition, commercial deliveries will be able to maintain the existing routes. The existing owner of the lots has allowed vehicles to use this private right of way for many years as a courtesy. However, this is private property and technically can be closed to the public." The potential for relocating traffic goes on to say, "The majority of the impact would be felt by the neighbors associated with Leroy, Tifton, Clifton, Gray, and Payne streets. This would clearly create a situation that would disrupt an historic traffic circulation pattern and adversely impact..." pattern and adversely impact over 100 homes in the area. The department does not support this alternative, as it is contrary to the comprehensive plan and adversely impacts the quality of life in the area. This is not a viable or practical alternative, and therefore, the department would not support this as a reasonable option. He goes on to provide us with some costs and some comparatives. So as you will see in your package, the cost to acquire the land, no cost. The value of the donation in totality is $28,800. The total lost revenue is $539.42. So as you can see, it's not a significant savings or cost either way. In conclusion, the department review finds no evidence of any environmental liability related to the subject lots. Acquisition of the parcels is determined to be in the best long-term interest of the public to ensure that the property continues to be utilized uninterrupted by the general public as a permanent right of way. It is recommended that the proposed dedication of land for public highway purposes is worthy of favorable consideration by the council. So with all of that said, you would ask yourself, so how did we get here? Well, about two years ago, there was a significant amount of publicity on radio and TV as well when one of the residents took it upon himself to fill some of the larger sinkholes in that particular area. No, it wasn't the one that I did, just to put that out there for the record. It was something much larger and more significant. It was at that time that it was learned that the city doesn't own the road. The Noels own the road. Well, what that did was the Noels ended up receiving notice from their insurance company that they were going to cancel their insurance, because they would not allow public access or liability for allowing traffic to continue on those roads. So unfortunately, the alternative here is to close that entire stretch of road. And as you've heard me put into the record, and I'll ask Eric to come to the podium in a moment, and also Joe Noel, as you can see, this would certainly cause a considerable hardship on over 100 homes that live in that neighborhood. It would also cause a significant burden to DPW, to our fire, to our school department, our school buses, and to the folks that live in that area, because the traffic would have to be rerouted. It would further put a significant additional burden on the two streets coming into it, which is Tiffany and Leroy, further disrupting beyond the 100 homes that have been approximated. So with that said, I certainly am respectfully requesting support of the committee for this. It's certainly in the best interest of the members of the public, the folks that live in that particular community, and to the city as a whole, and a long-term benefit to everyone. So I would respectfully ask for all of your support. Having said that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and if you all feel the need, I would ask that Eric Earls come to the podium and speak on behalf of Planning Department and DPW, and then we certainly can hear from Phil Noel. Thank you.
Thank you. First, before we go to the comment, I'll just add that I certainly don't think that there is any conflict for you on this, as there is no current business relationship. And want to thank you for all of your work on this. I can see how this would impact so many people, so many households. No one wants that additional traffic rerouted right by their house, day in, day out, and this solution makes perfect sense to me. With that, any further discussion on the committee? Questions, comments, members of the council? And let's see. I see that Eric Earls is at the mic. Want to make sure that you have a chance to weigh in anything that Councilman Lattiser may have missed.
I mean, I can add to the conversation, but if you're already all positive, then, you know, I mean, essentially, essentially what happened out there was the UER. When they pulled out, most of the UER properties got dissolved into public property. That didn't happen at this location. This section of the UER went to a private entity. So when it came time to build the roads, this was literally the path of least resistance, and that's how the road got put there. But, you know, Councilman Lattiser did an excellent job summarizing it, and, you know, Public Works is on board. Couple sections of this road are already being maintained by Public Works. So we certainly view this as a positive project.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from members of the public? Please come up to the mic.
My name is Rick Casella. I live in Ward 1. My question is to Mr. Noel. The roadway that you're willing to give to the city, I'm assuming is that roadway that runs into the woods and through and comes out at the other end at the entrance to the golf course. It's behind Mr. Wheeler's house, is that correct?
It's the extension of...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. These questions need to go through the chair.
All right, I'll go through the chair. So I think I know the road. My question, I guess, to the chair, who can then ask him, is, are you just giving over the roadway? Because you said lots, and I'm assuming when it was, became, it wasn't a railroadway anymore. Is it just the roadway, or is it the adjacent land on either side that's comprised of those lots that make that roadway?
From what I'm seeing, I see the roadway itself highlighted. However, if Mr. Noel would be so kind as to step up to the mic, and if applicable, I would also address the question to Director Earls.
Yeah, so like I said, these are three private lots, but they are where the roadway is located. There are no, like, buildable lots. When the UER pulled out, they took these pieces and created lots, essentially connecting... There's one section that goes, that's called Clifton, that goes from Leroy to Tiffany. There's another section, Meadowview Avenue, from Payne to Leroy. And then the third section is called Chatfield. They're lots right now, they're private lots, but all that those lots contain are the roadways. Yeah.
If you could please step up to the mic so that we have this on record.
The question was, do we own the land on either side of that? And the answer to that is, not all of it, but the land that we do own is in a conservation, easement, and unbuildable.
Thank you. If you could just say that to the mic?
That was my question. Thank you, Mr. Noel.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from members of the public? And we do have a couple of clerical amendments. So I'll make this motion, if that's appropriate, first. So we will do this as one motion to amend, two items in particular. Let me also just make sure that I'm looking at the correct page. All right. Move to amend, and first we have Page 1, Line 12, deleting 107 and replacing that with 197, referring to the lot number. Then, the one other change that would be incorporated into this motion to amend would be Page 1, Line 36, replacing the word "ensure" with an "I," and in its place, the word "insure" with an "E." All right.
Motion to amend?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Or, excuse me. I suppose before that, any discussion from the committee on the motion, from the council, from members of the public? Hearing none?
Motion to favorable action as amended?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's see. Then, moving along to the underlying matter, we have already had discussion of the committee, the council, members of the public, unless there's any further question or comment from members of the public of the amendment as amended? All right. No further discussion from the committee, the council, or members of the public of this matter as amended. Therefore, do we have a motion?
Motion for favorable action.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Passed as amended. Let's see. There being no further business, the committee closes at 7:02 PM.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We are going to start the regular council meeting in just two minutes, just getting everybody settled, and we will start the regular council meeting again after the Pledge of Allegiance and roll call. We will have a 15-minute public input, so if you're interested in speaking to the council, please go to the podium now and sign up, and we will do that first off. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I call the August 16th, 2021 council meeting to order. The clerk will call the roll. Here.
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 Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I would like to invite our special guest, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Morgan Nathan. And Morgan is going to lead us in the pledge. We're going to play the National Anthem, and then we're going to... I hear from Morgan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous spine O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting In air, gay and blue, through the night, That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the heart of the brave? o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Yeah, so I joined Scouts in February 1, 2019, when my troop, Troop 77 Buttonwoods, was founded. I was its first senior patrol leader, and I became an Eagle Scout on January 11, 2021. My project was a collection drive of household items for a homeless center in Providence called Crossroads, Rhode Island.
Morgan, thank you very much, that is outstanding work. I know us as a city, we really appreciate you and all the Scouts, and especially Eagle Scouts, that is a significant accomplishment, and you and your family should be really proud. And I want to acknowledge you bring a big crew with you, so I want to acknowledge your family and friends up there, and your troop. And again, you guys are a success story in our community, and we really appreciate you coming this evening and leading us in the pledge of allegiance. So thank you very much, and congratulate.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is executive communications. So we do have one announcement, and I think most people are aware of it at this time, but I'm gonna keep saying it to make sure everybody is on the same page here. The solar ordinance public hearing, which was scheduled for this evening, has been canceled. It has now been scheduled for September 20. So the administration continues to fine-tune this and look for input from the community. So please, continue to send in your thoughts on this ordinance to the planning department. You can reach out directly to the planning department, you can reach out to the mayor's office, and you can reach out to your individual councilperson. And to send in that, we want to have an open and transparent process for this ordinance and all ordinances here. And we will have a public hearing on this, and for now it is scheduled for September 20. We will keep everyone updated on that, and that ordinance will be posted, and everyone will have a chance to read that before the September 20 meeting. So thank you very much for your thoughts and concerns on this, and we look forward to working on that issue on September 20, city council meeting. At this time, other general communications, I have a few. First off, I have mentioned this the last couple of council meetings, but I think it's very important that we keep spreading the word, and I'm asking my colleagues on the council to please spread the word here. You know, we are, a lot of individuals, a lot of our neighbors are facing a housing crisis. The pandemic has put a lot of homeowners and a lot of renters in a very tough situation, and there are programs out there specifically to help you. So at Rhode Island Housing, there is a rent relief program. These are federal funds that all you have to do is show that your income was impacted by the pandemic, and they will help you pay your rent. This is to keep you in a safe and healthy place. It will go to your landlords, it is federal money, which you are qualified for. All you have to do is show a negative impact, and I believe everybody can show how they were impacted on this. So this program is available through Rhode Island Housing. I set up a meeting with Mayor Pacozzi and the leadership at Rhode Island Housing, we met with them. The mayor's directors are aware of this program as well. So if you're not comfortable reaching out to Rhode Island Housing, call the mayor's office, call your council member, and we will connect you and get this information to you as well. Rhode Island Housing will also have funds available, again, federal COVID relief funds available for homeowners that will help with your mortgage payments. That program isn't as far along as the rent relief program is. That money, the rent relief money needs to get out, we want to get that to as many people as possible. But please, if you're a homeowner and having trouble with your mortgage, please reach out to Rhode Island Housing, or again, the mayor's office or your councilperson, and we will put you in touch so you can get updated on the federal funds that are available if you're a homeowner. My other announcement is on Thursday at 9:00 AM at Brood Awakenings on Route 2, there will be a Coffee with a Cop, which is a community event that our community police officers put on. I think they've been on hold for a while because of the pandemic, but I have attended a number of these in the past. It's a great opportunity for you and your children and your neighbors to just come in a very informal place and setting and meet all different police officers, from the colonel on down to the new officers that have come in here. The big hit is always the K-9, the K-9 officer, so I am assuming they're gonna be there because they're usually the most popular there. But I just want to invite the public, again, that is Wednesday, I'm sorry, Thursday, this week, 9:00 AM at Brood Awakenings on Route 2. At this time, are there any council people, have any comments under general communications? Councilman Ricks.
Thank you, I'd like to congratulate all of those who attained the rank of Eagle Scout. I had the honor of speaking at the ceremony, the Court of Honor, for a couple of other members of our community here in Warwick who attained the rank of Eagle Scout. Also wanted to be sure to put out the invitation that the Norwood neighborhood, in, working with the city of Warwick, the tourism and economic development with the Norwood Neighborhood Association assisting in promoting the event. There will be a food truck event at the gazebo at the intersection of Norwood Avenue and Patuxent Avenue this coming Wednesday, it'll be that evening. So more information is available on the city's website, as well as on Facebook. A great community event, it's outdoors. Please try to maintain social distance and be COVID-safe. But these sorts of outdoor events are just great because we just don't have those many opportunities like we used to a couple of years ago.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Any other for general communications, Councilwoman Travis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the city of Warwick, the police department, the fire department, the public work for a great national layout this year. I know it's good to have national layout, it's been here, something like 15 hours each year. You know, it wasn't big as some of the others, but it was nice to see all those people come out and enjoy this stuff after such a bad year we had last year. I also did represent, I complimented Ollie when he was there, and I did announce him as one of the representatives of the city council. So again, thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Councilman Lattiser.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, I was, well, fortunately, I was away on vacation at that time. But it brings me to think, one of the things that occurred in Cuddyhunk, where I was, was by far the largest fireworks display I have ever seen. But anyways, having said that, I just wanted to announce today that today is my mother's 91st birthday. And let me tell you, she is, she is a feisty chick. She is doing very well and exceptionally good health at 91 years old. Thank you.
That's excellent.
Thank you for sharing that. Anything else for general communications from council members? Hearing none, unless there is objection, I would like to move the public comment up at this time, if, is there any council person that wants to object to that? Moving the agenda. Okay, we're gonna do public comment, I want to do last call. If anybody else would like to sign up, this is your opportunity for public comment. Anybody else? Okay. Rule 41, after the general communications and prior to the consent calendar at each city council public hearing meeting, there shall be a 15-minute period during which citizens may comment about Warwick city government issues, subject to the following situations. The total period of time for public comment shall be 15 minutes. Comments need to be brief in order to allow as many citizens as possible to participate. The topics for the comments shall be issues directly affecting city government. City council members will not respond to questions during the public comment period. The public comment session will terminate at the expiration of 15 minutes. Waiver of this provision requires unanimous consent. So at this time, we have two individuals that have signed up to speak, and the first individual is, I believe AJ. Just please come to the microphone, I believe it's still on, and then just introduce yourself, and just hold on to the mic like this because, as you can hear, it's difficult to hear in there.
Can you hear me? You know, I'll take my mask off for this. Can you hear me now? Council President McAllister and esteemed council, city council members, my name is AJ Panday. I'm a resident of 323 Countryview Drive, and I'm here today as a representative voice of concerned Warwick citizens living on Govin Drive, Fisher's Lane, Beacon Hill, Downing Lane, Legmont, and Countryview Drive. We live in a neighborhood directly off of Route 117 between the Inskip Autumn Mall and Valley Country Club. We are here to speak in opposition to the solar and wind farm development in close proximity to residential areas in Warwick. We understand this body of government has been contemplating the expansion of renewable energy sources for our city. We further understand these developments of solar farms and wind farms are being contemplated on lands that have been historically zoned for residential, open green spaces, and other uses. Under such a proposed solar ordinance, ordinance PCO 620-B, which I understand has been tabled for tonight's discussion, includes language that would allow for solar farm overlays in land areas that could encroach residential properties in areas in cohesive and possibly future development in and around our neighborhoods. As a group, we are in support of renewable energy, however not at the expense of blighting our Warwick residential neighborhoods and ultimately devaluing our residential properties. The residents in our neighborhood are doctors, lawyers, business owners, teachers, engineers, and other highly regarded professionals who work hard and take great pride in our neighborhoods. We are concerned about any development that will directly affect the quality of life and threat to our property values and the beauty. We continue to educate ourselves on this matter, and will do so on any future ordinances that may influence renewable energy development in Warwick, and hope to have an open and honest dialogue on how it will impact our properties. We welcome the opportunity to have you join us in our neighborhoods to directly see our concerns with abutting lands that can be viewed as future spaces for development. We do not want this for our neighborhood or yours. We thank you for your time and look forward to future information on building renewable energy spaces that will not compromise the integrity, value, and beauty of our neighborhoods.
Good evening, council president and council members. Just want to mention, there is a weird static that the audience finds it difficult to hear. I didn't hear Councilwoman Travis's comments at all. And I was sitting right there. So there's some kind of weird, underlying, static noise tonight. Hey, that might have worked. Thank you, I'll be brief, it's like a minute. So I've lived in the city of Michelle Comar at Warwick, resident for, since the late 80s. Time flies. And what I've been accustomed in this city is a planning department, which came next to none. It had a large staff, they were very active. That's city Cranston, city of Providence, with the three largest ones. And what the city of Warwick did is, they were heavy into the public participation portion of it. So if there was something new, a comp plan, a comp plan update, a harbor management plan, an update, a zoning ordinance change, there were workshops. And why these workshops were valuable is, you get all the heads in a room, and you get to hear all the exchanges. And I'm disappointed that this hasn't happened yet with this process. Yes, we had a field site visit on a Saturday morning, I couldn't attend. But I think we need workshops, and many communities have done this with ordinances that change or potentially change the face of what their community looks like. In particular, this is a zoning ordinance. Residents rely on zoning for the predictability of what's next door to them, what their community is gonna look like in the future. And this is a change to that ordinance. So in the months' time now, we have with a new planning director, I hope that we reinstate the public workshop concept and exchange of ideas all at the same table at the same time. I appreciate your invitation for people to send in comments, but by themselves, that's just their individual comments, that's time-consuming, too. Get everybody in a workshop, get them all done at once. It would also probably save public comment at the mic during the public hearing because everything, hopefully, would have been ironed out by that time. So I encourage the new planning director to reassess the process that's been going on in Warwick for this ordinance, which is a lack of public workshops. Now, if had this started at the very beginning, I made comment, I think we will, well would have been served with a committee. A committee of people in the know from the state, city planners here, residents that are active in this. Again, with the hope to get all those ideas out on some common table. And this really hasn't happened in the process yet. So I hope the message gets out to the planning director, I will reach out as well. But if the council could encourage and reinstate the process of public workshops, I think it would well serve the community.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, at this time, we are gonna go back to the start of the agenda, and we're gonna go the acceptance of the minutes. Reception of the minutes for March 31. Favorable action? Councilman Howe, second by Councilman Foley. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Councilman Howe, can I have a motion for April 5, acceptance of minutes?
Move favorable action, April 5 meeting?
Second by Councilman Foley, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Councilman Howe, April 19, please?
Sorry, Mr. President. Move favorable action on the April 19 meeting?
Second by Councilman Foley, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Councilman Howe, May 3?
Move favorable action, May 3?
Second by Councilman Foley, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstentions? Councilman Howe, May 17?
Move favorable action, May 17 meeting?
Second by Councilman Foley, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Councilman Howe, May 24?
Move favorable action, May 24 meeting?
Second by Councilman Foley, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Councilman Howe, May 25?
Move favorable action, May 25 meeting?
Second by Councilman Foley, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Councilman Howe, May 27?
Move favorable action, May 27?
Second by Councilman Foley, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Councilman Howe, June 7?
Move favorable action, June 7 meeting?
For action, second by Councilman Foley, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Councilman Howe, June 21?
Move favorable action, June 21 meeting?
Second by Councilman Foley, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Councilman Howe, July 19?
Move favorable action, July 19 meeting?
Second by Councilman Foley, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much, and thank you very much to the clerk who put in a lot of time and effort to get all of these minutes available. So thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We have already done public comments, so we will now move on to the announcement of appointments. These are appointments made by the mayor that do not require a vote from the city council. First up is for the harbor master, that's gonna be Matthew Pendergast from Ward 7. There it is. Um, the next is an appointment, um, by the administration to the retirement board for Brian Dunkley of Ward 8. Also onto the retirement board is Scott LeJoy from Ward 1. And then the mayor has appointed Deborah Quark, uh, to the Warwick Housing Authority from Ward 7. Next up on the agenda is appointments requiring confirmation. There are none. We are now moving to item number three, which is the consent calendar, PCR 101-21, a rela- uh, a resolution relative to bids. Councilman Howe?
I just need a moment, Mr. President. I just real, hold on one moment, please.
Got him. Uh, Councilman Howe, for, for, um, for action to, uh, uh, 101-21 relative, relative to bids?
Move favorable action?
Uh, for action, Councilman Howe?
Move favorable action?
Uh, second by Councilman Foley. Uh, go ahead, Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following items have been moved favorable by the committee. Bid 2022-063 fire apparatus, 95-foot mid-mount aerial platform. 2022-061 fire apparatus type 1 ambulance. 2022-062 fire apparatus, 1500 GPM pumper. 2022-033 aerial boom tree trimming vehicle. 2021-283 Alpha Bravo fire apparatus repairs. 2022-097 firefighter occupational medical evaluations. 2022-129 municipal fire training programs. 2022-075 consultant services, hazardous building material investigations. 2022-126 net motion mobility support and maintenance. 2022-113 vimware support and maintenance. 2022-094 maintenance engine AD self-service. 2022-128 State of Rhode Island purchase panasonic, Panasonic tough book. 2022-128 easy workforce upgrade WS clocking. 2022-114 municipal court software support. 2022-111 reaccreditation services. 2022-123 criminal investigation 1 and 2. 2021-064 police recruitment. 2022-096 radio communications repair and replacement. 2022-130 Lucas III service agreement. 2022-127 emergency overhead door repair. 2022-095 radio circuits. 2022-073 street striping. 2022-125 replace engine 2006 Zamboni. 2022-120 purchase new stainless steel sander. 2022-115 State of Rhode Island lamps, ball and related electrical supplies. 2022-056 purchase new Tommygate. 2022-098 rebuilding or re- rebuilding or rebuilt exchange transmissions and 2022-137 emergency purchase of RS45 cylinders.
Thank you very much, Councilman Howe. And just, uh, for the process, um, so, uh, we start our finance committee meetings at 5:00 PM. So all these items were discussed, uh, earlier in the finance committee meeting at, at 5:00 PM. And, uh, you can also find all that information on the city council's website, um, that, that lists all, all the items that will be heard for, in every committee, including this. So are there any questions that were not discussed earlier this evening on the consent calendar? Yes, we had a couple that were pulled, correct?
Yes, yes, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll do those after the consent calendar. Still under consent calendars, PCR 102-21, uh, resolution relative to abatements. Councilman Howe?
Um, Ms., oh, I'm sorry. Yes, resolution relative to abatements, favorable action.
Okay, for action, Councilman Howe?
Uh, move favorable action?
Uh, second by Councilman Foley. Uh, Councilman Howe?
Thank you, um, Mr. President. Uh, as discussed when the, uh, the, uh, assessor's office came in, a majority of them were, uh, assessed, discussed, and reviews that are mostly catching up from the pandemic closure. He says that pretty much, department's pretty much all caught up now, Mr. President.
Very nice. Uh, next up on the consent count is PCR 103-21, a rela- uh, a resolution relative to claims. This is actually, uh, Chairman Foley.
Thank you. We had three claims, one, uh-
I just move it first for favorable action?
I move for favorable action?
And, uh, second by Councilman Howe? Thank you. Go ahead, Councilman Foley.
Uh, we had three claims. One was held, the one for Kevin Klaemer was held to 8:30. The one for Joshua Rotundo was, uh, to reject. And the one for Erica Wilding was favorable action to, uh, recommend to pay in the amount of $394.99.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, all of these, uh, were done in committees earlier this evening. Are there any questions from members of the council on the consent calendar? This is the, um, the bids, the abatements, and, uh, claims. Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action on the consent calendar. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. The consent calendar passes. Uh, there were a few items that were removed from the consent calendar that we'll take individually. First up, uh, is bid number 2022-110A is now PCR 105-21. Committee report, finance, Councilman Howe?
Favorable action.
Uh, for action, Councilman Howe?
Move favorable action?
Second by Councilman Foley. Uh, Councilman Howe, do you have any comments on this?
Um-
I believe we're gonna just have one person that's going to recuse?
One upside.
Are there any questions? We are going to have a councilperson. I'm wearing this mic out. Um, we are going to have one councilperson who's going to recuse on this. So we have, uh, favorable action on PCR 105-21. I'm getting everybody's mics now. This is great. For act- I mean, uh, so for favorable action, the clerk will call the roll. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Uh, next up that has been removed from the consent calendar is bid 2022-160B is now PCR 106-21. Um, for action, committee report, finance, Councilman Howe?
Favorable action?
For action, Councilman Howe?
Move favorable action?
Second by, um, Councilman Foley. Again, I believe this is the same thing. We have a council member who's going to recuse?
Yes, Mr. President.
Any additional questions on this? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. The third item that was, uh, removed from the consent calendar uh, was a claim for Kevin Klaemer is now PCR 107-21. Uh, the committee report was to hold to August 30th, so we will do that. Hold to August 30th. Okay, now we move to, uh, item number one is PCO 6-20 sub A. This would have been the public hearing on, um, the, um, the zoning changes for solar. Um, as we've mentioned, uh, this public hearing has been rescheduled to September 20th. Moving on to unfinished business. Uh, first up is PCO 30-19 in ordinance involving state law regarding underutilized commercial property. This is being held to September 20th. Next up is PCR 39-21, a resolution extending, uh, extending a commission to examine possible means of tax relief for the Warwick property owners through tax exemptions and alerting composition of member, membership of the same commission. This is not drafted. It's gonna be held to the September 20th. Number three this evening is PCR 81-21, a resolution in observance of cancer awareness. This was not drafted. It's going to be held until August 30th. We move on to new business. First up is, uh, PCO 21-21 in ordinance in regards to the placement of no parking signs. Uh, this was, uh, Councilman Getheart who was unable to be here this evening, so he asked that we hold this to August 30th. Next up is PCO 22-21 in ordinance in regards to erecting a no parking sign, boat loading and unloading only on Robert Ave, north of Charlotte Drive. Again, this is, uh, Councilman Getheart's legislation. He asked us if we could hold it to August 30th.
August 30th?
August 30th. Number three this evening is, uh, PCR 100-21, a resolution accepting donations of land for public highway. Uh, the committee report, public properties.
This, hm, excuse me. Uh, hold to, or excuse me.
No, I believe this is the-
Oh, thank you. So recommend favorable action?
Uh, favorable action with amendments?
Uh, correct. Favorable action as amended, the amendments.
Well, we'll, we'll get a, uh, uh, vote first. So you move favorable action with amendments. Uh, do I have seconds? Second by Councilman Foley. Okay, for action, um, Councilman Ricks?
Uh, move favorable as amended.
Okay, and, um, do we want to read in the amendments? Yes, please.
Um, so the amendments that were pointed out in a subcommittee, um, changing line 12, 107 to 197 to match the rest of the document. Um, a second amendment was suggested at line 36, um, changing the word insure to n-shore with an E.
Okay, any questions on the amendments? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable actions on the amendments? Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and now we're gonna move it as favorable as amended. Uh, Councilman Lattiser?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, we spoke at length, um, on this during the committee. We heard testimony from Eric Earls as well as the owner of Hubba Lights, um, Joe Noel. And, um, having said all that, um, I would respectfully request, um, favorable action.
And, uh, Councilwoman Travis is going to second that and, uh, Councilman Foley, Councilman Ricks, and, uh, Councilman McRey and Councilman Howe?
Thank you, everyone.
Any questions on the motion as amended? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action as amended? Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Uh, now we move to unanimous consent. Ward 1, anything under unanimous consent?
Pass.
Ward 2? Ward 3?
Pass.
Ward 4?
Pass.
Ward 5? Ward 6? Ward 7 passes. Ward 8? Ward 9 is not here. We have a referral and advertisement. Um, PCO 23-21 in ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the Warwick, of the city of Warwick, RWR Real Estate Investment Group LLC, participant. Um, this will be, um, this is a referral for advertisement. Uh, Councilwoman Travis, can you please move us to the docket session? Any objections? Hearing none, we are moved to the docket session. Uh, Ward 1, anything to docket?
No.
Ward 2?
Pass.
Ward 3?
Pass.
Ward 4?
Pass.
Ward 5? Ward 6? Okay. Uh, public safety? 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 Councilwoman, you've been keeping the, uh, traffic, uh, police, uh, busy. I like it. Yes. Uh, Ward, uh, 7 has, uh, nothing to docket this time, Ward 8. And I will docket something on behalf of Councilman Getheart. Uh, tentative title is a resolution directing the city of Warwick Planning Department to execute any necessary steps towards obtaining a conservation easement for the property found in land evidence residence at book 3065, page 0188, commonly known as Dorley Farms. And we will put that in, uh, Land Use, uh, Land Trust, um, Committee. And at this time, there is no more, um, before us. I just want to thank, uh, the council, the administration, and the public, uh, for working with us on this. Again, please reach out to us not only on, on zoning issues, but on any issues. Uh, we are all available. Uh, contact the mayor's office, contact your councilperson, and, uh, we look forward to hearing from you. Everyone, have a good evening.